And welcome to the Monday, December the 2nd meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. In accordance with the Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure, I will be presiding over the meeting until the chairman and vice chairman are elected and have been administered their oaths of office. We'll begin the meeting tonight with the invocation. Commissioner Dennis Rake.
If you would, bow your heads with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, I come before you tonight, a sinner saved by grace, and I ask for your blessings on this board, this county, and all the people that live in it. We're so proud of what we do and what we have here, but we also know that it comes from you. We ask that you give us wisdom in making decisions to provide for the future. We ask that you protect our public service, public safety, EMT, all aspects of government that work for the people. We ask for your guidance in all these things. Amen.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now comes the election of officers in accordance with Rule 4 of the Board's Rules of Procedure. The Board shall elect a chair and a vice chair from its members, and the chair and vice chair shall take and subscribe the oath of office for their respective positions. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rushing.
I'd like to nominate Jerry Simpson for chairman.
Jerry Simpson is nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Manager, I move that we close the nominations and elect Mr. Simpson by acclamation.
Have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Simpson is now the chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Now we will proceed with the election of the vice chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners. I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Simpson.
I'd like to nominate for vice chair, Mr. Dennis Rake. Mr. Dennis Rake, Dennis has served us well this year and put his heart into this board, and I think he'll make fine vice chair.
Commissioner Rake's been nominated for vice chair. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Manager, I move that we close the nomination process and elect Dennis Rake as vice chair by acclamation.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rake has been elected vice chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Simpson, if you would, please, front and center, and take your oath of office. Mr. Rouse, if you want to come around. We have J.R. Rouse with us tonight, clerk of court, Union County.
Congratulations on your election as chairman of the Union County Board of Commissioners. Are you ready to take your oath?
I am.
You solemnly swear that you will support, maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, so have you got it?
I will.
You solemnly swear, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so have you got it?
I will.
You swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to the law, so have you got it? Congratulations.
Please join me in congratulating Mr. Simpson. Yes, Ms. Rake, will you please go in front of the dice for your oath of office, please?
All right, Mr. Rake, Commissioner Rake, congratulations on your election as vice chair of the County Board of Commissioners for Union County. You solemnly swear that you will support, maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, so have you got it?
I do.
You solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will bear, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so have you got it?
I do.
You swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to the law, so have you got it? Congratulations.
Join me in congratulating Commissioner Rake on his election. Mr. Chair, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Manager Watson. Next item will be item five, elected officials' bonds. Elected positions are required by North Carolina General Statute to maintain personal bonds while in office. Individuals are responsible for securing these personal bonds. Union County has undertaken the responsibility for placement of these bonds. Bonds are placed by U.S.I. Insurance Services. The bond for the sheriff is $5,000. The bond for the register of deeds is $25,000. $325 for a four-year term for the sheriff's bond, $88 paid annually for the register of Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion on the floor and discussion. All in favor, say aye. Next item is employees' bonds. Financial services administrator and tax administrator required by North Carolina General Statute to maintain personal bonds. $350 paid annually for the financial services administrator, $210 paid annually for the tax administrator. Motion to approve bond amounts for financial services administrator for $100,000, tax administrator for $60,000. Do we have a motion and discussion? All in favor, say aye. Takes us to our public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a rezoning, a conditional rezoning, additional rezoning, 2019-012, Potter Road Animal Kennel. This is a request to amend the zoning map for Union County for a piece of property from R-40, which is residential, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, to R-A40, which is residential agricultural, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size. And again, this is a conditional district. The applicant requests this rezoning in order to build a commercial animal kennel on the property. Uses on the site, if approved, would be limited to the new animal kennel, a parking area to accommodate the facility, and the existing house. Since this is a conditional request, the district is bound by all conceptual plans and conditions if they are approved. This first slide is the site plan. This is along Potter Road, so Winding Creek subdivision is just, just a little bit north and across the street, just to give you a reference point. Newtown Road is just to the south of the property, and there'll be another slide that shows that in just a minute. This is the property. It's about seven and a half acres, give or take, and you can see it's the existing house. There's the driveway coming off Potter Road. Their intent is to build another gravel drive, the parking lot, and the proposed kennel with an office on the inside of it. The reason they had to do a rezoning, R-40 District does not allow animal kennels at all. R-A40 allows animal kennels with special use permit, but as part of this process, if the Board were to approve the conditional rezoning, they don't have to go through the special use process. These are just some photographs of the property. Again, it's heavily treed. This is the driveway going into the, into the site. These are some shots looking up and down Potter Road, and one on the top right is across the street. So again, you can see this is a fairly heavily wooded portion of Potter Road, and again, looking in the property, it's pretty, pretty heavily treed along the road. And you'll see some slides in a second that show you that the rest of the property's fairly treed, too. The applicant for this is David and Delane Winchester. They are the property owners. They will also be the operators of the kennel. It's 1302 Potter Road South is the address. Again, the Winding Creek subdivision portions of that are inside the town of Wesley Chapel. That is, that was a satellite annexation, so the closest main portion of Wesley Chapel is a little bit to the north and to the west. Most of the properties in this area are either underdeveloped or undeveloped. You can see that this is a seven and a half acre tract. The one that's highlighted has a house on it. A lot of the other properties in the area are vacant. You do have some scattered subdivisions. Just for reference on where this is, a piece of property I'm kind of hovering on is the south side of the Crestwind Development that came before the board last month. It's a mix as far as utilities go. There are, there is public water and sewer in the area, but it's a mix as who's served. Some properties are served by water and sewer. Some are served by water, have septic systems. Some are well and septic, just depending on where those lines are. This parcel has been zoned R-40 since Union County established zoning in 1978. That's this slide. There's no major environmental features on this property. There is a fairly major stream, I believe that's Molly Branch is what that's called, just to the north, but this property kind of sits up on a ridge, and you can see the wooded nature of the property. The kennel would sit just a little bit north of the house, but the vast majority of that tree buffer along those property lines would remain. No major traffic counts in the area. There is one down on Potter Road, I'm sorry, Newtown Road, that was done back in 2018. That's 4,500 vehicle trips a day, so that's 2018 numbers. These are both shown as two-lane roads with paved shoulders, so no major improvements are anticipated on those. This is our comp plan. So you can see this area lies in the single family, but fairly close to the mixed residential area, but this is not being proposed for any kind of subdivision or single-family use. This is being proposed as a kennel. Since the primary use of the property, the primary use of this property is a single-family residence, based on the size of the lot, the owners could have up to 175 percent of the square footage of their house as accessory structures. This would allow them to have approximately 3,500, just a slightly more than 3,500 square feet of accessory buildings on that property. The existing detached garage and the new kennel, if approved, would equal approximately that square footage. The reason we point that out is if this weren't an animal kennel, if this were just a storage building, they could build this without any kind of, I mean, they'd have to get a building permit, but no kind of government or board approvals, I mean. In addition, a lot of times, if this were R-A40, this would've gone to the Board of Adjustment for a special use permit. We've had a number of those that have gone to the Board of Adjustment in the past. Primary issues that typically come up are noise from barking dogs and odors, you know, in case the dogs, the owners aren't cleaning up after the dogs. One of the primary ways that the Board of Adjustment typically deals with those is if the owner lives on that property, then they sort of look at it like, well, they're going to take care of it because they don't want to hear a bunch of barking dogs either. And in this case, I pointed that out because the owners are living on, the owners of the kennel do live on this property, so they will be there. Since the single-family, and the single-family residential area does anticipate some light commercial at key intersections, based on the size of the property, the existing screening and the fact that the owners of the property live next door to the kennel, staff believes this is, would be an appropriate use for this property. The Union County Planning Board considered this request at their November meeting. The Planning Board heard presentation from the applicant, and they unanimously voted to recommend approval. Nobody spoke in opposition at the Planning Board meeting. The applicants are here. I think they do want to make a short presentation, too, so take any questions if you have them. Otherwise, I'm sure the applicant wants to come up.
Thank you, Lee.
Yes, as you have heard, I'm David Winchester to address, and I'm here to address any questions you might have. I have my builder here with me to back me up if anything is asked that I'm not aware of, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask them for you at this time.
David, I've known of you for many years and nothing but good things. I know your father was one of the many Santa Clauses that would show in the area. I know anything that the Winchester family is associated with, they do it first class, and I think it will be an asset to the community.
Thank you.
Further? Thank you very much.
If there's no opposition to this meeting tonight, could I request that you guys vote on it tonight, possibly make some kind of decision so I can move forward with my plans? Is that a possibility?
You certainly can request it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. We had no one to sign up to speak, and so we will close the public hearing. Next item is the opportunity for hearing by claimant regarding request for refund of excise tax paid to the register of deeds office. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, the law office of Chris Karinstein has requested by letter received on November 8th, refund amount $400 for excise tax it had paid when recording a general warranty deed in Union County. They find that they recorded the deed in the wrong county, and it should've been recorded in Mecklenburg, and therefore the excise tax should've been paid in Mecklenburg. They're requesting refund of that amount. This is an opportunity for that law firm to make any comments or have a hearing before this body, and the only individual allowed to speak in the public hearing on the matter is the taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with reference to this issue? This will be considered as item number 16 on our consent agenda, and at this time, we will move on to item nine, which is the opportunity for hearing by claimant regarding request for refund of excise tax paid to the register of deeds office.
Mr. Chair, the Turner Law Firm is requested by letter received on November the 13th, a refund in the amount of $606 for excise tax it had paid when recording a general warranty deed on November the 12th. The deed should've been recorded in Mecklenburg County. It was obviously recorded in the wrong county, and therefore the excise tax should've been paid in Mecklenburg County, and they are requesting a refund in the amount of $606.
Do we have anyone that would like to address that issue? Hey, that will be considered on our, as item 17 on our consent. Having, having no one to speak, we'll move on to our informal comments. We have no one to sign up, so that will take us to... Should be additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that we add CZ 2019-012, Potter Road Animal Kennel to our agenda for the next decision.
Make that 25A.
Motion to approve the agenda's adopt.
Hold on, just, Commissioner Hales, did you have something in addition?
Same, same issue.
Same thing? Okay, I'll entertain your motion now, Commissioner Hales. All in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Now to consent. Motion to approve consent as presented. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That'll take us to old business. We had no old business this evening, so that will take us to new business, and item 25, which is Union County Transportation, and I'll call on Assistant County Manager Michelle Lancaster to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, you will receive a presentation from Union County Transportation Division. Teresa Torres is our director of that division, along with Jim Ritchie, NCDOT consultant, who has worked with staff and NCDOT to complete the most recent Community Connectivity Plan. Staff is not seeking any action from the board tonight. However, this is an information-only presentation that we hope sets the stage for a more robust and in-depth conversation at the appropriate time and place in the future regarding our public transportation and any transit issues that may arise. Your agenda package includes a much longer presentation than you will actually receive tonight. The full presentation has been provided to your Transportation Advisory Board, as well as the Consolidated Human Services Agency Board. Both of these groups have received a full presentation, which is well over one hour, and so being mindful of our time tonight, staff has worked to trim down the presentation to key issues and points that we believe are important for you as a board to consider. The primary focus is going to be to provide an overview of the work that transportation currently provides, the current performance of the Division of Transportation, and also recent work that has been completed regarding the larger issue of transit and public transportation in Union County. So now I'll ask Teresa and Jim to come forward.
Chairman Simpson, member of the board, County Manager Watson, thank you for allowing us to present today. As Ms. Lancaster indicated, the intent of this presentation is to assure awareness of Union County Transportation, service in the current state, discuss UCT performance, and review future issues and opportunities related to both service and funding. Additionally, we want to begin our conversation regarding the desired goals for public transportation as a whole in Union County, and ultimately enable a better understanding of the role UCT can play in achieving those goals. When I began to think about this presentation, I thought it was important to understand and answer a seemingly simple question. Why does Union County transportation exist? In the early 1990s, Union County Human Service Program did provide some transportation, but it was non-coordinated, the programming staff away from its primary functions, and it did not take advantage of federal and state funding. From 1993 to 96, the Foundation for Union County Transportation was laid, with initial goals to enable a coordinated transportation system that would facilitate cost-effective and efficient transportation for the county's internal and external human service agencies to maximize use of non-county funding. Transportation focus was on serving elderly, disabled, and economically vulnerable residents to provide access to medical service, food, and other necessary services. From 1996 through today, the program has grown in the size and scope, but overall, the intent and mission has remained the same. We aim to provide reliable, efficient, safe, and effective service. We are dedicated to approaching our work with a positive attitude and a passion about serving our customers and our community. Today, I have the good fortune of leading a team of 57 awesome employees. We operate 24 vehicles. We work from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. We partner with Anson County Transportation to provide relay service to Charlotte. We provided almost 80,000 trips last year, 720,000 service miles for our community. Our destinations include Union County, Matthews, Charlotte, Salisbury, and the occasional trips to the VA in Asheville-Durham. The effort has included expansion of our relay service for Anson County Transportation into Charlotte. This partnership is important because it allows us to expand our transportation in Charlotte, and it allows us to keep our UCT vans in Monroton, Union County, to provide more trips to our residents. The transportation program is accountable and accountable to and influenced by multiple entities and regulations. UCT's operating parameters are fairly complicated due to the need to take advantage of all the opportunities offered by each of these different governings and oversight components, and due to the necessity of adhering to all of the rules and requirements associated with all funding sources. Leadership from both the county planning department, as well as the human service agencies, transportation divisions, participants in countywide and regional transportation planning by coordinating with NCDOT and transportation planning organizations. The western two-thirds of the county is represented by Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, while the eastern third is represented by Rocky River Rural The human service agencies, Transportation Division, UCT, is the county's only transportation. We provide demand response transportation, and we also manage the 74 Express contract. Our primary focus has remained on meeting the needs of the county's elderly, disabled, economically vulnerable residents, and providing access to human service-related programs. Over time, our number of annual passenger trips has fluctuated. While total number of trips is important metric, it is true that the total number has previously been as high as the county's over the last year. Trip count is only part of a story. Writership is also impacted by facts that public knowledge of UCT is limited, marketing is extremely limited, daily trip counts have been limited based on scheduling and running constraints, limited full-time staffing. The bottom line is UCT's ability to continue to meet increasing demand and expand service to residents is limited. To begin to address some of these limitations in 2018, we initiated a deep dive into the division's processing and funding with the goal of maximizing the use of resources. With a goal of maximizing service provisions capacities, UCT has begun to complete performance improvements initiatives, and has worked with NCDOT's transportation consultants to better understand issues and opportunities associated with funding and service provisions. This work was, has included a project with NCDOT consultant Jim Ritchie from WRA to complete a Community Connectivity Plan, which is designed to help create a base plan to enable a long-term transformation of UCT program and help allow us to be goal-oriented, proactive, high- transformation of UCT program and help allow us to be goal-oriented, proactive, high-performing, and have a level of accountability and empowerment. While we have realized a good deal of improvement, as we see in this upcoming slides, we do face challenges to sustaining and growing service provisions to meet service demands and have opportunity to better serve our residents. I'd like to welcome Jim Ritchie and ask him to come to the podium to share some of the results of the work done by our partners and highlight key opportunities and recommendations stemming from the County Connectivity Plan and UCT Performance Improvement efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Teresa, thank you very much. North Carolina DOT, through their Public Transportation Division, provides funding across the state to urban and rural agencies, but they're really responsible primarily for administration of the federal funds. So, NCDOT, through some on-call consulting agreements, have asked Whitman Requart to develop this Community Connectivity Plan. Now, what we looked at was the current performance and service trends. Received some public input. We looked at service and connectivity, especially at gaps, and the maintenance of your existing and future assets. Honestly, folks, this is all about funding, and where does the money come from? The US Census plays a role here, although they're not, they don't write the checks. They really impact how the county receives funding. Now, funding comes in four different ways. Agency-related funding, county-wide funding that comes from NCDOT, rural-related funding that is for areas outside the urbanized area, and the urbanized area funding. That's all how the census is involved. Now, over time, the agency funding is relatively stable, although there are real questions about Medicaid and the Medicaid transformation and how that will occur. County-wide funding administered through the state has been stable. The rural funding, because of the expansion of the urbanized area, has decreased over time and will decrease further with the 2020 census. And the urbanized area funding comes to the metropolitan area, is administered both by the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the city of Charlotte as the designated recipient. Now, the map that's shown here is of the 2010 Charlotte urbanized area, where 70% of Union County's population was in the urbanized area, and 30% was in the rural area. What will it be come April of next year? My guess is something in the vicinity of 90% of the county's population will be in the urbanized area, and the urbanized area will really grow. Again, this is something the census simply dictates. Now, looking forward 20 years, we use the North Carolina Office of Budget and Management's projections. The county population is projected to increase in 20 years by 45%, but the real growth in population is going to come in the elderly population. We expect the 60-plus population to increase by 107%, and the 65-plus population to increase by 132%. Now, many of us in that age group need to give up our car keys, and all of us, I'm sure, will hold on to them as long as we can. But one of the real keys in maintaining the viability of the county will be to manage that growing elderly population and making sure that they are able to live a high quality of life. Now, we also looked at commuter flows. You probably know these numbers very, very well, know the neighbors that are near you. But you have roughly 78,000 workers, based upon 2014 data, in the county. About a third of all workers in the county work at jobs in the county, whereas two-thirds of workers in the county leave the county to go to other jobs. Of course, you all know, many folks, 54% of the workers, people that have jobs in Union County, they commute to Mecklenburg County. You've already had some services, your express service, for example, that is meeting part of that need for those commuting out of the county. Now, I want to take a minute here to talk about some of the more complicated data that's been collected. The first column is pretty straightforward, though, that in 2010, fiscal '10, you had 23 vehicles in operation, and you currently have 24. During that time, the county has increased in population by about 17.5%. So just by sheer population growth, the fleet is being stretched. Other things that are really evident from the data is the trip distance, how long people ride on the vehicles. As the county has become broader in terms of population and where people living, the increased average distance is up 21%. But traffic congestion is a real problem. We all know it and lived through it. And it impacts the productivity of your service, whereas the average speed on the service has dropped. Now, the one thing from this slide that I really want you to look at is really that last column, this vehicle utilization, that one vehicle operating 2,080 hours a year would be 1.0. We're now operating that one vehicle well more than 10% more than that 2,080 hours a year. And really, to maintain the fleet and/or the services, we need to expand the number of vehicles in the fleet. Other thing that we really also need to look at is the mix of part-time and full-time employees that Teresa showed just a minute ago. In this economy, attracting additional full-time employees or additional drivers, we really need to make some of your part-time employees full-time employees. The real benefit from that is reduced training and recruitment costs, as well as improved safety. Our new drivers have far more accidents than our experienced hands. So I hope you'll consider the some shift in the number of full-time and part-time drivers. I want to look really near term. As Teresa has taken the reins of being your manager, she has really worked hard to both open up to more trips being provided, but also working to get more revenue in the bucket from the different agencies. One of the adjustments we recommended some time ago was to adjust the billing rates. And you can see a real change here in the amount of revenue earned in the service. That's really strictly through an adjustment in the billing rates. But all of the categories show a positive improvement. Now, we looked at, as part of the plan, service improvement issues and opportunities. We often talk about it as a gaps analysis. We provide service countywide, but there was a large area in the county, the urbanized portion, where because you didn't have urbanized formula funding, you had a large gap there. You also have other gaps, late evening, people that, elderly people especially, are going to be out shopping or are going to have some other work trips at evening and weekend times. There's also the potential for additional services in some of your key corridors, especially US 74. Now, Whitman Requart did the statewide Public Transportation Strategic Plan for all 100 counties, and we looked at revenue hour targets that we thought were appropriate. So we tried to look at it as a good, better, best, and we did it on a revenue hours per capita basis, how much service you provide in terms of how large your population is. Good, generally, the minimum in most rural counties was about .3. Best was about .5. Charlotte is certainly, in terms of the amount of service they provide, much higher than that. You're currently at .21 revenue hours per capita, and that's something that we think there is demand for additional service. We also looked at passenger productivity in terms of riders per hour. We think there is further enhancements that can be made in your productivity. We've already seen some of those in the last year or so. Now, some of the concepts that we encourage you to consider are further coordination strategies, coordination not only with Anson and Mecklenburg, as you're already working on, that has a potential, a funding source that goes along with it from the state. We also encourage further coordination with community colleges and with major employers. We think you can look at modest expansions in service, whether it's evening service or Saturday service. We came up with some estimates that you might use here. We also think a structured schedule can improve productivity, and so you might serve one area of the county from 7:00 until 9:00 in the morning, and then expect to be back again at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And I've already mentioned that we think that there is the potential for some fixed bus routes, especially again in the US 74 corridor. But you know, it's all about funding, and it's all about how you're able to pay for this service. We know the rural funding is going to decline, and we've got to get a fair share of your urbanized area funding through the city of Charlotte, both to minimize Union County's expenditures, as also to provide the needed services. Managed care through Medicaid is also a big question that you will have to grapple with in a number of ways. We've already adjusted the trip expenses to reflect fully allocated costs. And I really want to emphasize, Union County has provided strong financial support for this program over time, but there's also the opportunity for municipal partnerships, perhaps especially in some of the fixed services. Now, we need to think about revenues. What revenues could be possible? First of all, roughly $875,000 of your formula funding is being retained by Charlotte based upon their determination on the formula. We think that formula needs to change, and the county commissioner should take an active role in helping that formula change. Second, if you provided some fixed route services, there's this state program called the State Maintenance Assistance Program that could be available. You all know the limits on your taxing authority, both for cities and counties, and you're well under those limits, by intention, by the way. But they have some room for property tax. There's also two other that would require a vote of the Board of County Commissioners, a vehicle registration tax, which is up to $7 per vehicle. It would generate about $1.4 million, $1.5 million a year. Again, a vote of the county commissioners is required. Or you could consider adding a 1/4% sales tax. That would also require, though, a vote of the people, and would generate about $5 million a year. I'm not recommending any of these, except really the first one. I think you should really work to get your fair share. But I want you to know that these are all available to you.
When we say work to get that, what does that look like?
Well, let's look at this slide right here. The urbanized formula from the federal government distributes money to urbanized areas across the state, from 50,000 to certainly New York City at 20 million. It generally comes in a formula that is population, population density, and revenue vehicle miles. Most urbanized areas that I have worked with have adopted the federal formula as the way to distribute the funding. Well, Charlotte didn't. Charlotte decided they would come up with a different formula that had to do with both ridership, as well as the capacity of the vehicles that are operated. And you can see the result here in the comparison. The federal formula generates between, well, fiscal '19 is $1.2 million that is being generated, and Charlotte has allocated, through the metropolitan area, 28% of those funds. It's simply a decision by the combination of the city of Charlotte as the designated recipient and the MPO to revise that formula. There are three requests that we think you should forward to the MPO. First, the formula itself. Second, some use of the planning funds, because there's a fairly large allocation of 5303 planning funds that come to the region that should be used by Union County as well. And then, you are paying for the cost of this express bus service. You should get the credit for that. And Commissioner, did I answer that question?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, moving forward, really wanted to emphasize that what transit really does is that transit provides the opportunity for low-income residents, people with disabilities, and our growing elderly population to live a productive life. Yes, we want to use transit to address traffic congestion, but transit often assists mostly people of modest incomes and modest means. Union County Transportation is already focused on really trying to deliver the best possible product, and my look at them is that they are doing really a very good job with it. But there's really three things that we think you all should consider. One is the formula funding through the MPO. The second is we think your fleet size needs to increase. Now, that needs to increase based upon the revenues and the expenses, really what you're willing to budget for. So I don't want to give you a, oh, it should be one number or another, but the size needs to increase. And third, staffing's really hard right now. In this economy, we really need to shift somewhat from the 37 part-timers to a higher number of full-time or restricted full-time employees. With that, be glad to answer any questions that you all have, and thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you, Jim. Questions? Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is 25A. Commissioner Akins?
Yes, sir. I would ask that we approve, let me find it again here. CZ 2019-012, adopt the applicable consistency statement.
We have a motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Aye. Item 26 is our Union County Comprehensive Plan Committee Appointments, and Brian Matthews will...
I'm actually a little bit...
Oh, okay. Great.
These, if you'll recall, back in September, we opened up application process for the Comprehensive Plan Committees, and these are the committees that are shown on the slide. There are five committees that we're asking you to appoint members to, and those are the Citizens Committee, the Agricultural Committee, the Environment Committee, Business and Development Committee, and the Infrastructure Committee. We're also asking you to appoint five members to the Coordination Committee. The other members of that Coordination Committee will come from either the Chairman or whoever the subcommittees elect as their representative to this Coordination Committee. The Municipal and County Planning Staff Committee is made up of Planning Staff or whoever the municipality wants to appoint to represent that municipality. So we're not asking, this will primarily be done by the municipalities, that they'll appoint people to that committee. In that month, the applications were open from September to October, we received 142 applications. We envisioned each committee to have between eight and 12 members. That was what we considered to be the optimum level. If you get too low, you know, if you don't get enough, that's not enough representation. If you go over 12, it gets a little difficult to manage. So that eight and 12 seem to be the sweet spot. Based on a total of 60 slots and 142 applications, there's enough to fill 12 slots on each one of those subcommittees. And again, the Coordinating Committee, we're asking for five people on that as well. Our lowest number of applications were for the Environment and Agricultural Committees. Breakdown, you can see there on the board, 64% were males. About 70% of our applicants lived inside a municipality. percent of our applicants lived inside a municipality. We did have a very wide dispersion of applicants, based on that, based on that zip code, which, which, which was good. And, and we were, we were pleasantly surprised by the number of, of applicants that, that we had. A lot of times in situations like this and planning processes, you don't get enough people to fill those slots. So to have one hundred and forty-two applications and enough people to fill every single slot with some left over is, is, is a good situation to be in. Means that there's a lot of interest in this out in the, out in the community. Guiding principles that, that, that we kind of looked at when we came up with some of our recommendations, we wanted geographic balance, so we, we looked at zip code. We also wanted a municipal versus a county balance, so we didn't want it to be all county, just unincorporated residents. We also didn't want it to be all municipal residents. So, so we looked at, we looked at that. We also wanted a gender balance. We wanted to have women represent at least the same percentage as the total applicants. And we wanted to attempt to mix in community members, so leaders, community members that were interested in the process, and technical experts with relevant experience to, to these, these fields. And again, just, just this observation that we had a hundred and forty-two applicants, there's a lot of interested people in the community, and these are, were very hard choices, and they're going to be hard choices for you to make as well. But again, just to recap, what we're asking for is appointments to those, these five committees, Citizens Committee, Agricultural, Environment, Business and Development, and Infrastructure. Twelve people at each one of those committees, and then five people to that overarching coordinating committee. And these are, these were the people that, that when we filtered through these guiding principles, that staff sort of identified that we recommended to, to appoint. Again, you don't have to appoint these folks, you're, you're welcome to appoint anybody that applied of those one hundred and forty-two applicants. And then the five coordinating committee members, that's open to anyone. So it could be any one of these people, it could be any one of the folks that didn't get a, that you don't appoint, or it could be anyone in general that you want to appoint. These are, this is the agricultural list, and I believe you guys had this in your packets, but this is the agricultural list. We have infrastructure, business and development, environment, citizens. I can go back to any one of these if you want to take a look at it. I know that's a lot to digest, just kind of quickly going through those slides. And again, we're just asking you to approve those subcommittee represent, subcommittee recommendations, sixty total representatives, and identify those five representatives for the central coordinating committee. Be happy to take any questions.
Lee, first question is, I believe maybe we had a individual that was recommended to serve on one of the committees, and he's now deceased, is that correct?
That, that is correct, and that was on, I believe that was the, I believe that was the Business and Development Committee, and we have gone back through the list and made new recommendations, and that, that is reflected on this slide.
Is it the pleasure of the Board to take each committee separately? Would you like to approve them?
Motion to approve them, as long as, as long as I say.
Have a motion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right. And the...
Now, you need five more, right?
Five more, yes, sir.
Mr. Helms.
The names we give you, do they have to have an application filled out previously?
No, sir.
Okay. I think I spoke to most of the Board members about this, so we can just, Commissioner Aitken, I'll start with you, if you have a representative you'd like to serve?
Not this time, no.
Okay. Commissioner Rushen?
One, one go. Would be, for the official form, I'll serve on the social form.
Okay. And Lee, would you like to coordinate to get the contact information or the details on that?
Yes.
With the Commissioner, okay. Mr. Helms?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Max Googe, a veteran.
Mr. Ray?
You spelled that last name wrong?
Sorry.
G-O-U-G-E.
G-O-U-G-E, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Philip Hilton Brooks, and I'd just send his contact information to Mr. Matthews.
And my suggestion would be Baxter Starnes, who's a local CPA. He's agreed to serve, so. So I tell you what we'll do, we'll, do we need to approve those five as a board?
Four.
Four, I understand, four.
And I'll, I'll put Brenda Stewart from Waxaw on that list.
So you're having your five. Motion to approve the five selected by the Board members?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item, before we move to comments, is typically the, the Board assigns committee representation, Board of County Commissioners are, not only do they serve on this board, but they serve on a number of other advisory boards throughout the county. And usually, we like to take a week or two to go through those and decide if we'd like to remain on the ones we're on, or if we'd like to change out, or something like that. So I would ask Clerk, if she would, to provide that list to the Board members and where they're serving, and then at our next meeting, we will assign those. And with that, we will go to Mr. Watson's comments.
Thank you, Chairman Simpson. Piece of news came to me right before this meeting that I thought that you would enjoy Several months ago, the Union County provided a economic incentive for a natural gas line extension through the town of Marshville to the Union County-Anson County line, and I learned this evening that construction has begun. The pipe is going in the ground.
Excellent.
So that was good to hear. Lastly, if I might, Chairman Helms and Chairman Ray, it's been a pleasure serving with y'all the past year in leadership positions. Thank you for your service. Chairman Simpson and Commissioner Vice Chairman Ray, we look forward to a productive year and looking forward to serving with you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Aitken?
I have no comments this evening, wish everyone to get in.
Commissioner Rushen?
Would like to congratulate the Chair and Vice Chair and look forward to a productive year.
Mr. Helms?
I'd also like to congratulate the Chair and the Vice Chair and Mr. Manager. It has been a true pleasure working with you, with your leadership, and I look forward to what Union County will accomplish this coming year.
Mr. Ray?
I would like to thank Commissioner Helms, he was a true mentor for me this year. I appreciate all four commissioners and the interchanges we've had, and I hope the Chairman will allow me to keep our agenda meetings as lively as they have been.
Just a few comments. You told me I'd be sitting in this chair a week ago, I'd been as surprised as you are. So, you know, we do this every year, but the selection of a chairman is, is not an easy decision. And I will tell you that, that you do a lot of soul searching and a lot of thinking about who you want to serve in, in the leadership position on the Board of County Commissioners. And I say that to, to thank each Board member for their support. I'm humbled by that support, and I know that a lot of soul searching went into that, and I appreciate it, and, and I certainly thank them for this, once again, opportunity. I want to thank J.R. Rao, Clerk of Court, for swearing me in. I like to do that with J.R. simply because it's a little bit of a trivia to me. My great-grandfather, James Calvin Huey, was Clerk of Court here in Union County way back, and my great-uncle David Simpson was Clerk of Court here in Union County. So I never made it to Clerk of Court, but, but we'll have to count, being a Commissioner, along with those two relatives. I'm, I'm wanted, again, to be chosen, and I look forward to working with staff, the Board, municipalities, and the citizens as we move Union County forward. The Chairman has a role, but it's a very specific role and a very limited role. Decisions are made by the body, which is this Board of Commissioners. We operate transparently, and we work together, and we build consensus, and that's what moves the county forward. That's how we make decisions. It's a great system. And I'll, I'll leave you, if you don't know by now, it's been about nine years, if you don't know, but now I like quotes, so I'm going to leave you with a couple of quotes. One of those I'll start with takes me back to my Scots-Irish and my Martin Luther and my Protestantism, and that is Mark 10, forty-three, forty-four, and I'll paraphrase, it said, "Whoever wants to be first must be slave of all." And I firmly believe that. And then finally, I found out that the ancient Chinese philosopher, Lao Tzu, was considered one of the first libertarians. Now, whether he was a, which direction that libertarian bent, went in, you can read about. But he said that a leader is best when people barely know he exists. When his work is done, his aim fulfilled, they will say, "We, we did it ourselves." So again, thank you, Board, and I'll offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.